So we are, we are out of executive session for the Joint Town Council Special Meeting and Budget Committee meeting of Tuesday, June 25th. And we are going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance if you would all join me please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Which brings us to item number four, which is the consideration and act upon a resolution regarding the recommended ratification of a contract for the Cheshire Library Union Local 1303-431. Council for ASB, AFL-CIO through the 24, 26 fiscal year budgets. Ms. Kramer, please.
It resolves when the town council approves Revolution 062524-1. It resolves that the town council approves the collective bargaining agreement between the town of Cheshire and the library union local 1303-431 of Council for ASB, AFL-CME for the terms July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2026 as presented and as approved by the union membership.
Second. Thank you, Ms. Kramer. Thank you, Mr. Jinks. Any discussion on the item? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, motion passes unanimously by those present. Which brings us to item number six, the capital expenditure budget and deliberations. Mr. Jinks.
Where do we want to begin tonight, Sean?
Where do we begin?
From here. So we have two documents in front of you. Apologize for the little papers. So we are trying to go electronic since we start here. But we do have two documents that will look familiar in different ways. The first is the yellow, brightly yellow colored full summary. It will, it mirrors what you see in the capital budget books, but it now includes numbers based on conversations or where we felt conversations had ended with some assumptions on what the town councils, the TC line for each project, based on the changes that the event presented at the last meeting, the conversations we've had and a few more that we'll go through. When there are changes, you will see them colored in sort of orange, highlighted the cell to the cell. So that, this document shows not only year one, but also years two through five. In order to kind of summarize just the first year projects, the other document kind of mirrors the format that we have for the public hearing notice. This is the current list of all first year only projects and project amounts, first year appropriation only. What is not included is a second column that you'll see on the eventual final document that includes the amount proposed to be bonded. Jim still has to go through based on sorting some of these around, offsetting those projects that would be funded by CNR, but are not bonded, which are just being worth cash. And then also maybe in some cases, we will have some projects where there are grants or offsetting dollars that we don't wish to have additional bond authorization for. But we will kind of cover that. Maybe we'll get closer to wrapping up. Tonight, the real purpose is to go through this list and start to discuss where the council feels specifically with year one. Can certainly talk about years two through four and some case, two through five. In some cases, you'll see that those are relevant. But it sort of depends on which document you want to go through. The shorter one is maybe a little cleaner and sort of just straight listing those new projects. As we can always reference the other one as needed, but happy to sort of either document.
Sean, what is the new, the new net total? Is it the?
So, yeah, so there's a, the new net total at the end of. The new net total is, well, I shouldn't say net total. The new gross total is $14,919. Or is there, there is one?
On this Jim's.
Oh, still, okay.
Give it to me and says it.
It's on there, okay.
That's the new one?
Yeah.
Yeah, why did these, oh, do we have reference errors on this plan?
It's on this number.
You have that.
Yeah, it's 14,919. I can give you a new cover sheet there. It must have printed with some reference errors to some cells. But we don't have the offsetting grants or other resources calculated just yet, correct, Jim?
Correct.
So I just need a little more time to check, you know, the grants and to the extent that, you know, we make some changes on some of these projects. I might be able to include, you know, another project to be funded under CNR. So I just need a little more time to work with that. But just, just kind of keep in mind that it's about a million dollars. 1.1 million is what we put in the budget this year for CNR. So that's generally what I have available to offset these projects and the net amount that we bonded.
But there, isn't there other grants and stuff that we backroom to?
Yes.
There are, yeah. And so those will be on, for the most part, those are on each individual page. The cover sheet, I can actually go ahead and print a new one. It's, I know what it's, it's doing. It's referencing some cells that we had, some spreadsheets that we had to delete. So we'll, we can get you a new cover sheet, but.
But the public, the public number, the top line number is the gross.
The gross number is 14, exactly. Total project, 14,919. Now, there are a few new additions to that that we'll go through. And one specifically that we'll want to talk about as a proposed new first year project based on state grant funding. We recently were notified of for the adaptive turf field, miracle field, so to speak, proposed at Bartlam. We have $750,000 proposed grant. We have a dollar amount in here. This is open for discussion tonight. 1.2 million dollars for that project, the initial estimate. And again, very little background design work or anything done on this. Mirroring up with a similar field constructed in town of Vernon, which came in last, was built last summer for about a million dollars. We have a little bit higher budget number there to be somewhat conservative. And also anticipating there would be some fundraising efforts to go along with that project. So we can either get into that now or come back to it. But that's one that while we had a number of reductions, that gross number comes back. Of course, all of it is bonded. The proposal, as it would stand right now, would be 750,000 from the state, 250,000 from the town, and then 200,000 of possible sort of gap funding or fundraising to take care of any difference in design. It's very preliminary. We have no design. We have no project.
So we have to put the whole number in here?
You would always put the whole gross in here, but when it comes to calculating the debt service or projections or anything else, we only ever calculate off of the debt.
Because I mean, the first year is probably going to be the design cost anyway, right?
Right. I mean, right. I mean, that is inclusive of design costs in that full number. You could just appropriate design only in the first year if you want to in the interest of trying to get the project sort of going, knowing that there's now, we sort of have funding, but no project yet, no design, as opposed to the opposite.
I would prefer just to put a design cost in there because we have, know nothing about this. We, we don't even have an idea where we're going to put it, let alone how much it really is going to cost us. And there could be, because if you're putting it in the backfield there, there's, when, who knows what we need. So I would rather just put a number for, for design purposes and put the whole 1.2 million in there.
How long is the state grant good for? I mean, if we put design in, we have the 750 we have from next year, you have to.
Yeah, it's unlimited as far as, there's no, all we have is, it's five commission money, so it's going to be granted to the town. There's no other sort of strings attached that we're aware of at this point. They'll assign it to some, I think it's going to be assigned to the EDCB, so there'll be paperwork we have to sign to accept it should we wish to move forward. The way it was put in the bottom package, we did have a total project cost of a million dollars, with 750 coming from the state, 250 from some others, which is whether those are fundraising or fundraising issues or town appropriations.
So I tend to agree with Don personally. I mean, I'd raise this with Peter. I didn't know anything about it until I saw the articles that the state was giving us money and telling us we were putting a field. It was a little frustrating for me to see that. And I think $100,000 for design for this year is a more appropriate way to, site selection and design, because I don't know where the proper site is. Bartlam maybe. I just, you'd have to engage the Department of Requisition and John and to tell us where it makes the most sense, I would guess.
Has there been any discussion about that at all before?
No, I mean, with John, yes. When we've talked a little bit about, I mean, phase two of Bartlam South was always going to do at least one additional diamond, necessarily turf diamond. Coupled with Darcy coming offline, that's the current location of the Cheshire Challengers using Darcy field there. There's been some talk for years about could we find a home, try to partner them with, or connect them with Cheshire Soccer Club, who's kind of looking at a turf field for a little while too. And then really the only reason the backfields at Bartlam were kind of a moment of preferred location. It does continue phase two of Bartlam South. And there are also four of the drainage fields right now, so you could kind of two birds, one stone, fix the drainage problem there and replace it with a turf field.
So you'd end up with this and then another still a soccer field back there? Is it position field, aren't there?
It's the size of sort of two lacrosse fields there, but yet you kind of have, depending. And again, I think one thing that, I know the language in the bond the commission put forward said miracle field. It's important for everyone to know miracle field is something of a trademark term. It's often used kind of like Kleenex and tissues to sort of refer to an adaptive diamond or multipurpose field. The real model, I talked, I did talk to Derek A. from the Cheshire Challengers. Again, everyone's very excited about this prospect. His, his preference though was a little more, I think the town of Rocky Hill has not technically a miracle field, but it's an adaptive multipurpose diamond, but soccer field overlay. Yeah, depending on cost, I think that's preferable for a lot of reasons. And then the other reason this is attractive is we know we have something of a burgeoning diamond issue with leagues that are looking for our diamond. Especially except they have T-ball, it's sort of U6, baseball, softball. You can play those sports on this, even if it's not an apt use. And that might kind of be a little bit for the town too. So that was the initial concept. And then, you know, again, someone surprised to see it bonded. Were you talking about the tree?
The field behind the pavilion?
Yes, right, past the bounds.
Where the garden, but it.
Yeah.
Up to like that tree line.
Right. And that playground, of course, as we know, is also an adaptive playground, boundless playground. So there's some sort of, we pave and perhaps that's something that the town could help contribute. This is what Vernon did. They put theirs at the school, but they, the town took care of paving, you know, some sort of zero entry paving drop off area for their particular fields. That area at Bartlam is currently unpaved, which is the gravel lot at the back. But totally agree, site selection, design, what do we even want to do? We have a lot of options. We don't need to rush into any of it. 100,000 is enough for, I would think so.
It's more, it's about 10%. That's more than enough.
I think we need to start to get some of the players together, some of the leagues and the interested parties together, start counseling whatever we do.
Well, I think it's important too, because then, then you're going to get an idea of what the whole scope and cost of the project is. I wouldn't like to see the town put any more than 250 into this. So, you know, if it is more than that, then, you know, we ask some of these groups or there's, there's a possibility with Cal Ripken, the Cal Ripken League that has been very involved with these, the miracle league across the country, to get a grant from them or to get fundraising from challengers or whatever.
Well, my wife was on the board for the, involved with the park that they built there, Bartlam. And they did a lot of fundraising and grants.
The, oh, the place shape or whatever.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, the boundless, whatever.
Right.
But yeah, that's, so, and she was really involved in that and they did a lot of fundraising. They did a, I don't think the town put up a lot of money for that because most of it was grants or donations. So I think if we can get groups behind this, that would be great. Because I, I agree with you. I don't think we should have to put more than 250 into it.
Yep.
200.
Whatever. So do you guys want to go down? How do you guys want to proceed?
I'd rather go through the, unfortunately, the long list rather than the.
Yeah, so just to orient everyone, if we go over the yellow, yellow pages here. Yeah, skipping the first page, summary page. And we'll mostly focus on fiscal 24, 25. That will mirror what you have on this list. So the first page, yeah, nothing there for revaluation until later years. We briefly touched on the technology reserve fund appropriation that we have pretty much annually.
Thank you.
And the town and school security project. We touched on those at the last meeting.
Now we can talk about Apex because they're out of the room.
Yeah, exactly. But both of those are sort of more school related this year. Again, Apex covered both town and school. And in this case, the 250 is, includes upgrading the wireless network infrastructure for the more education buildings. And then the next item, the 110, is replacing all video surveillance and door access controls across, across the entire town and school system. That's an iterative process or project, so you'll see there's multiple years of future funding also requested.
So we'll, Sean, why don't you just, you know, go through these? If somebody, if we get to an issue and somebody's got a question or a comment, we'll, we'll stop and talk about it there.
Sounds good. So the next one is, would be the next page, general services, vehicle replacement. All in year one, 507,000 is what I had recommended. So we've kept that number the same for the town council line for now. Can't open to any other questions or comments on that. Some talked about police vehicles.
Yeah, so I would be in favor of eliminating one of the Tahos in year one off the 231. Was that about 60 grants that went out?
Yeah, just under 60. I think the book says 57.
What is, what makes up the 231? I probably should.
I'm confirming right now.
Okay, so yeah, so it's roughly, it's just, it's just under 60.
So 57, 740, so 750, 57, 750 is the number.
Is that something that everybody can?
It's still being trained.
Yeah. Everybody's okay with that?
We're still, we're still in like a, we order them, they don't get them for like 18 months right now. They come a little quicker than that depending, not 18 months.
They're not fire trucks.
But they do take, sometimes, there was that issue with the chip shortage and also redesign, I think that Chevy did, but I'm pretty sure. I know one just arrived with the last one.
Sean, did you have some? No, there was a big, there was a big item in the public works, but I don't see it here. It's the excavator. Yeah, that's not, that's somewhere else.
We took it out.
It is.
That's been taken out?
It's still there.
Yeah, it's still there.
So we'll get, yeah, we'll get, yeah, that one, oh, sorry. It's not in this.
It's not here. It's not in this.
It's in its own appropriation, it's of course, yeah, yeah. These are more smaller vehicles, pickup trucks, light duty and Tahos. So the, the public works one is, it's just a pickup truck. A pickup truck with utility body.
About 233?
Yes, for maintenance and shower.
That was the one that was a bit more needed than the utility body one?
Right. The other one was 73,000, but the utility body is very much needed based on the house.
Does that include the plow?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
With plow and sander.
Yeah.
So.
Oh, no, that sounds right. I know we took the building, you, you didn't put anything for the building, but the building inspector, I remember we had an issue with, they were reusing a used car. I mean, did we straighten that all out with, did the building inspectors have cars good enough to get around?
Yeah, so we purchased newer vehicles. Well, we got a lot more building inspectors. We did take the, I had sort of the idea, the escape, there was an escape assigned to the parks and racket director, who John just doesn't use any vehicles from the prior round or two, right, right, just again. So there was this escape that recreation had. It's kind of very lightly used. You'd often see it parked over there by the youth center. And it also was kind of impractical for what they need. And once all they need to go set up, you know, the recreation, they have a pop tent or they have people chairs and they have that. So they gave it to the building department to cover one of the other needs. And that is why you see a recreation request though, 48,000. That is for more of a sprinter van type vehicle. That would be better for recreation to load, set up camps, put the pop tent in, put chairs up for events. Recreation is more in sort of the event business and that would serve them a lot better. So that's why you see the 48 there. But yeah, I eliminated the building department for now. I think they're doing okay. They do also have access to the assessor's vehicle, which gets sort of very lightly used also.
It was used a little bit during revow, but there, it's not burned.
So they have. Smaller car can go on all sites, but there's often a lot of these larger jobs that two of them show up together. Because one's doing electrical and one's doing building. So for now, correct me if you're wrong, I think the four vehicles they have access to recover.
Okay. They'll ask for another one next year though, probably.
And then there's nothing but, just to be clear, capital planning, you know, there was 100,000 requested. I identified we still have about 170,000 in other, two other capital planning appropriations. We talked about that a little bit in terms of some of the planning money we have, and maybe I'll tap into that and kind of designate it. But I did not fund 100,000. I moved that to year two and that's, that's where it is.
Sorry, can we go back to the WPC vehicles, 135K?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
What is, what was that for again? What was it? Truck, pickup truck?
It is.
It's like a pickup truck and explorer or something like that?
Yeah, it is. It is the.
I was trying to find in the book here and I couldn't find.
Yeah, it's page 157, first year, there it is. Okay, it's two. Yeah, it's a.
Pickup truck and.
There it is, yeah. I'm sorry, one, two. It is a four by four pickup truck with plow. They do their, you know, their own maintenance of the facility there and the home stations. For 80,000. And then there is a engineering WPC director's vehicle, $55,000, an SUV like a Ford Explorer, just kind of a smaller structure.
And the write-up, that was, they're currently using something else. They're using a Ford Escape. It's just, the Escape is old, older?
It's an older Ford Escape. Yeah, that was handed down from the public works, the former board position I think before. So that is, that is town engineering. That's the town engineer, proposed town engineer vehicle.
Can you just go back to the WPC?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
You said they do their own maintenance. And is there a reason why public works doesn't handle the, you know, the lots over there and stuff? Or is there, just because that's how, I mean, you know, it, sometimes I'm wondering how much are we paying somebody to go and plow the, plow the parking lot there? Versus having a public works person doing it when, you know, I just worry about, you know, our, you know, we're paying them a big amount of money to do their job. And in the meantime, they're spilling, spilling the parking lot. Is that?
Yeah, this has particularly come up and I think we've made some strides towards it. I'd have to confirm with, with Dave how things are going now. I know early on, some of the things we identified, particularly in areas of mowing, we had our WPC operators operating on mowing equipment to confirm around WPC plant. There was some thought that maybe that could shift to a public works and grounds function as opposed to doing WPC operators. I think when it comes to plowing, and I'd have to follow up to confirm, but I think, I know for some of their call-ins, depending on what the urgency is, the same individuals who are coming in to be on call or make sure in a snowy event that the plant is ready to be to respond to emergencies or whatnot are the same operators who would be there on call for that event. So sometimes there's just a decision to have the same person there as opposed to three, nine employees.
Do they go do the plant stations as well, Sean?
They do. They certainly mow and maintain them all. I don't know if in every storm they are plowed out. I mean, it depends on the nature of the storm. I think they do plow them. But I'd have to confirm and I can get back to you on that for sure, the current operations.
So just, just going back to the Ford Escape, that's what I was just kind of wondering if that's something that we really need. It looks like they're planning to use the old ones for something. Based on the write-up here, existing 2012, will it be used by the wastewater plant to replace manual mechanics?
Recording stopped.
Used to transport samples and stuff?
Oh, it says in the write-up here. Yes, so that's correct. They, right now.
Nobody say anything really good for a case.
Oh, we're still, we're still, we're still technically reporting, just so you know.
Still, you're.
Yeah.
That's good.
Oh, yeah.
Do you have the USBC?
Sorry. Yes, so, I mean, back to your question, is it absolutely critical? Probably not. It's probably something we could push out in terms of the direct, I mean, it's a domino, I have to write it. It's the idea of replacement. The town engineer is using that, the older, it's about a 12-year-old Ford Escape for the, for the town engineer. The other, they would, they would propose continuing to use the older Escape for transporting samples, pumps, hoses and other equipment. I don't know exactly how that works, but that is what the proposal was.
Okay, yeah, I was just, in reading that, I was just wondering, why can't you just use one of your other trucks to do the, transport that stuff? Seems like better than Ford Escape, but I don't know. So, you know, it's not a lot of money, but it just seems like something that may be a little bit unnecessary.
Right, right.
Is there anywhere else kind of feeling that way or not really?
Yeah.
Okay. So that would be to remove the 50, move out the 55,000, you have that and make that 80?
Right.
Good, that's fine. Oh, that one is WPCV, 135 becomes 80.
So 55?
55 reduced. I'd probably put 55 in that year too, just to kind of hold it next year. We can already miss it. And I can follow up. If there's something critical I'm missing in terms of the use of the old vehicle, I'll email it out.
Okay.
I'll ask Mary for a summary.
I mean, I'm sure Mary will let me.
Sorry, Sean.
Yeah, go ahead.
Because I think I'm skipping down to where we're going anyway, which is recreation, the, it's the, oh, that's the cargo van. Okay. No, I'm fine with that.
So we're going to go to the second page here of this. We're on public property now?
Moving to public property, yep.
Right. So we have 50,000 for the design of the boiler and police station. Next item is the 310 for various town building improvements. This one, I did check the balances. That's, that is kind of critical to be replaced based on where we are now. And those are, some of those emergency and it's in every other year appropriation, but it helps offset and have funding available for building needs that arise during the year. Roof replacement at the police station, again, another design only at this point. That's the 25,000 replaced. Further down, two projects down, 700,000 is the salt shed.
How old is the current salt shed?
It's a big number.
It is a big number, yeah.
And is, is it leaking or is there issues with it?
The salt shed, the tin salt shed is from 1973. It is showing its age. The wood framing is rotting. The exterior metal panels are degrading. The shed is unheated. It houses vehicles and equipment, which keeps them secure and have the elements. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm reading the wrong one. Sorry. Salt shed is 1987.
I was reading the story.
Yeah, you can.
1987.
37 years old.
Just move the cursor.
Thank you.
Sorry, 1987, the, it only holds, this is the one where it's holding enough salt for three routine winter storm events. The wood superstructure is degrading from constant exposure to salt and moisture. requires repair.
Have we already paid for the design? Is that where this came from? So we haven't even paid for the design on this?
No, so one option, I talked to Dan about this today, is we could lower that down to about 50,000 was the number he felt would be more than adequate to design.
And see more, yeah.
And move out the balance during the year.
Yeah, I would, I mean, that would be great.
Yeah, I was, I was hoping to move the whole thing. I don't know if that's fine.
No, let's, well, I, I'm okay with leaving some. Now, let's, well, I'm okay with leaving some planning.
We missed you. Welcome back.
I'm sure you're going to use it down there.
Yeah, yeah.
I just feel like with the winters being mellower, it's just a harder thing to, I think, to ask people to pay for it this month, but.
And it's clearly a referendum also.
Having said that, I'm sure.
You just put that in here.
Thanks. Now you've just pulled it.
You just cut it out.
The last several years have indicated that it's not, winter is not what we do now, but we'll see.
It's the snow, but. Only the stormtorts are staying. I'll take that.
Perfect. So fifty thousand for design and then you want to move the six fifty out to year two? Two or three?
And we can discuss it next year.
Yeah.
Ultimately, it doesn't really matter what year it's.
She has jinxed us.
Yeah.
Okay, then it's a double jinx.
That's the first time you turned that, I guess.
Two jinxes and a positive.
Like a double negative.
It is?
Yeah. So again, similar, another, below that, another design request of thirty-five thousand for improvements to the youth center.
Do you know what they're looking to do?
Yes.
Bathroom.
Air conditioning, bathrooms and window replacement.
They said it was pretty.
Pretty bad. Bathroom's pretty tired. Air conditioning is very limiting. It's also limiting, it was the reason we had to go to Highland School after Storm Isaiah as a cooling center. It's cooling. You said it can't be a cooling center with the air conditioning. But otherwise, it serves, it is on generator, so it serves as our small-scale emergency shelter. We don't have to open up a high school. So there's some logic to having that a little more. And then events, I mean, you do lose, and I know we, I was asked last time, as we've gotten back into returning to leasing out the space for events, clearly having an air conditioning facility is much more attractive.
I think there'll be a lot of, I think there'll be a lot of town groups and other groups that would be happy, we could get that back into the available circuit of spaces.
And we say air conditioning, but I think, you know, if it could be a cam, it could be ductless splits or some more high efficiency units.
I don't think it has to be. You know, you just had, we had to have an air conditioning there a little bit in that room. But I think, you know, when they, when that came offline, you know, I understand the idea, but now if it can come back, when it came offline, I think there are a lot of groups that are like, we're also, where are we going to have these events? So I don't know what the capacity is in there, do you know?
You know.
About one fifty, maybe?
It might be, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Let me try to remember what the occupancy was.
For the trivia?
No, when we did the lighting across the street.
Oh, right, yeah.
As we moved the lighting ceremony.
Inside, yeah.
It was pretty, pretty busy in there, but I guess we got a hundred and twenty-one.
Yeah, they have tables in there, yeah, but you go in, you figure each of those tables, eight, ten people, at least ten tables, yeah.
I had asked at a previous meeting if we had any numbers on what that.
On the revenue generating? Yeah, I don't have those yet, but you can come on that.
Even a ballpark? Because I have, I've never rented there or attended an event. I just don't know how it's used, who it's used by, and what kind of investment, return on investment kind of situation we have going on with that.
Sure. Follow up is done and see if it's, and then we talked about pre, kind of pre and post-COVID numbers and we'll see what we pull.
Also, the last question I have on that, do bathrooms are complete, gut rebuilt, or is there anything where you can do six stalls and do partial repairs?
Yeah, it's pretty bad.
I mean, but the plumbing's there. I mean, the plumbing's there.
Dangerous or not?
No, I would say it was dangerous.
It's just dangerous.
It's for the entirety.
Yeah, but you're going to do rentals and, yeah, you're going to want those updated.
Yeah. If you're just using it, it's fine, but if you want to, if you're going to go in and fix it up, you might as well fix it up.
Okay. And this would just be designed to start, you know, in probably a PBC project, those sort of things that I've heard of. And then moving down, nothing in year one, you'll see the first orange representing a proposed change. I had moved up this town hall off a space reconfiguration. We talked about that a little bit last time. A little bit of a nice to have instead of a must-do, and I think recognizing that physical constraints and where we are now, I'm perfectly comfortable moving our charter department to former building department. We could be good at this down the line at some point, but I would, I would probably just cut that project altogether, leaving one of them out. We're not going to take advantage of that source.
Yeah, I think you'd take advantage of the space that's available and, you know, down the line, we'll look at.
Does that mean that there's an eighty thousand reduction in what the bottom line was?
It would, yeah. Be a full four ninety, right? Yeah, in year two, you'd also see a four-ten reduced when the charter is. Yeah, I brought it in my one-hand. It's already off, it's sitting off.
Yeah. It is already off. Unfortunately, it's already off.
We're not getting it, we're not gaining it. It wasn't.
We can do, yeah.
And then the next page, we add, so, and that's incorporated.
Yeah. So the, I do have a replacement cover made off the super, just to answer something without the reference errors there with the details. We'll make sure we end that out there. Yes, next page, it's just a hundred and fifty thousand for design of the animal control facility. Based on the discussion last time, we moved that up to year one. About ten percent of the project cost, and then that placeholder number stays out there in year.
Although I know everyone was stressed out about it, that we have to go somewhere else or anything. I mean, because we had twenty dogs there, I think that's such an odd thing. When we normally have two or three dogs. If we can't try and make it work at that location, you know, to, I would like to at least suggest that we try and, we have a serious look at accommodating the state's new requirements at that location to see what it would mean, as opposed to just immediately just giving up and moving on.
They could have to do with a lot of the dog runs and things like that they have to have, that the state is mandating it, but.
I don't know.
And I don't even know if it's big enough based on what the state is asking. That's the whole thing.
Well, see, I don't think that's necessarily, I don't think we know that for sure. I think that's the thing.
I mean, the chief's kind of one, because a lot of it is outdoors. You're going to have dogs outside and, you know, and the ways that we go with that and, you know, who knows? I'm just, yeah.
We're not a big municipality that has thirty dogs over there. I mean, we just have usually two or three.
Other than my.
Oh, it's the last two years.
Average is going to be much higher.
I just don't want to overreact to this.
Right, as long as some of those dogs don't come back.
It's like building eleven cells.
Until someone asks, someone asks the question, what's the max that we have there? Great. Everyone thought it was the average. Most of them ever had once maybe. It's like, you don't really get that.
Along the lines of, John, you said we're reacting. I, I know that this is supposed to be sort of done by twenty twenty, twenty and twenty. We just found out this like last week. And we're already putting a hundred and fifty K in the project.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's just for design, right?
It's just for.
Number can be whatever you want to be, or not, or not very.
I think we should, I think maybe evaluate that facility and then if that doesn't work, look for a site selection for a new facility, maybe fifty grand.
Yeah, this might be a good option just to reference again, as I said, we have this.
I think let's move it off to the next year.
You know, we have existing non-specific project planning money. So we, over the last few capital budgets, some years we've approved sort of just money to be used for design and possible capital projects. So by the time they come to the council, they're a little more, the numbers are a little more harder. Exactly.
Why would you want to do that?
We've also, sorry. Why go against the trend? But in other cases, as you've seen, and the board has done this number of years too, is we've asked for a smaller amount in the first year and then known that that second year can adjust. My point is, we do still have on the town side, two appropriations totaling a hundred and seventy thousand, and there's a hundred thousand dollar appropriation on the board side for building, valuation, design, capital project and design money. So if you didn't want to put anything for this, but you wanted to sort of direct either resolution or however from this conversation, hey, we want you to engage somebody a little further and start to get, you know, a better sense of the site selection or cost estimates without having to approve a hundred and fifty thousand dollar design appropriation.
I think that's great.
I think, I think it's easy to just get the specifics of what it has to be and just look at what we have and say, is it possible? I mean, that's something that anybody could probably look at and say, okay, it's possible to do it here or it's not possible. Then we know, okay, now we have to design it somewhere else or we could fit, design it for this space.
Yeah, I just think we have like four years. I don't think we have to, like, like I said, we just found out next week, we don't have to jump at this right.
So you want to put nothing in there for this year then?
I was thinking nothing and then look at next year, start.
Yeah, maybe in the next twelve months we'll use, really it's the next seven, eight months before we're going to get another capital.
Maybe the state will give us some money for it.
It is.
Also, if we could put some parameters before we send that out to contract and design, as opposed to what happened, I think with prison cells where they went, or a smaller number, possibly they would need to building out their seven, if we can come up with some sort of, after like the initial design, sort of stay on, maybe the size of the project.
Sure.
So that when we get back, our designs are more in line with what we're thinking and what. Just a big time and energy.
One of the things that.
You pulled the whole thing out. The fourteen twenty-five comes out of twenty-six twenty-seven, so, right? Are you taking the whole thing out? And you're removing a placeholder, I should.
Yeah, we'll, we'll leave the placeholder of one fifty for next year and the fourteen twenty-five for the year after. Or the one point four.
Yeah, it doesn't. It sounds so much better at fourteen twenty-five, right?
But one of the things that, in fact, Sean and I talked about today was, where am I going? With the schools coming online in the fall of twenty-six, it probably would be something good to start planning, just maybe a brainstorming session of the council, similar to, for those of you that participated, the one, in fact, I don't know, maybe it was just, you guys did, right?
Ellum, yeah.
The one at Ellum?
Oh, yeah.
Were you in that one, John? So the, we did a, we did kind of a, a planning session at Ellum Park, but I don't think it needs to be that structured or whatever. I would just love to get a planning, a brainstorming, spitballing, call it whatever you want, to say, okay, just think, like, happens coming offline, what are we doing? What's the ideas? You know, let's soup to nuts, you know, and maybe that incorporates something that includes an animal shelter, but, you know.
I could, I think that's a great idea.
I think we start doing it now before, you know, the fall of twenty-six is upon us. So, you know, let's get some ideas at least captured and we at least give people an idea of where we're going and, and it may factor into budgets, you know, as, as we go forward. You know, if we're going to sell a building, for example, or whatever, or a property. So, anyway.
Is that something we get on the calendar soon or not, not to, not to go and set it up?
I mean, I don't know. The fall, I think we wait until school's back in session and kind of vacations are over. Maybe it's a September, October timeframe that still gives us two years from the, the actual events, but.
Have a series of two weeks a week for a monthly show, you know?
Yeah, exactly.
Start at seven thirty.
Is there food?
And we will do food. We'll do a dinner meeting.
Two weeks, four, I know.
Okay. Sorry, Sean, go ahead.
All good. So I guess moving on from public property, that's the last of the first year planners there. We have the West Main Canal dredging on the next one. I think the conversation in the last meeting was to lower that to a hundred thousand is a good number. There's consensus on that, we can move on. Yep. Here we are, prisoner cell renovations, so something had to happen with the four hundred thousand. So we moved it out a year and all this subject to conversation. That one point nine seven five is the number we got from the Public Building Commission. Obviously, this is still very much the subject of some possible designer vision discussion. But I believe the consensus was not to fund anything in this year. So then that zero is fine and that number can be the placeholder unless you want to see it at a point.
Did we actually tell them that we wanted to release a new design though? I mean, I know we talked about a lot of ideas, but.
I think Peter sent them away with some directives.
Yeah.
You did?
Bring us back something more moderate. Was that the gist of it?
Well, yeah, with, it wasn't, it wasn't seven cells and was maybe three.
And see if there's other towns that may be interested in.
That's what we left them with. So we're expecting that to come back to us? Is that how that worked?
Yeah, they would probably, yeah, they would meet or their subcommittee will meet and have a, to you guys. Hopefully maybe the next council will announce. And then we added the comprehensive traffic study as requested last time. That two fifty is the number. Chief Drive had requested prior years. He still felt it was a good number. I know when we talked to him yesterday. We're still going to engage the cog, the ground, corridor, which they expect to be coming, right? And so, so some of those two fifty may, it may not be actually needed. I think managing expectations for what that traffic study is and means, I think is helpful.
Have we spoken about specifics? I'm sorry. Have we spoken about specifics of, what I'm learning is that traffic studies are incredibly narrowly defined, each separate one. When do we get together to discuss what we want done first and how we want it done?
Well, I'll say something. I think we're, we're jumping a little too soon because the, the north end isn't going to be done for another year probably, and I think we're going to have to do another one. And then, is it, is it wasting money now to do it now if we're going to end up doing it next year or have to do it? We're going to have to do it after everything is completed because it's going to affect the traffic. So I don't know if doing it in this year is the best way, especially if we're doing the other one with the cog. I mean, that, that's the bike and head, right?
The cog is more actually ten and corridors.
Right.
State road study basis. So it might actually pick up a little more of a.
So what I, what I heard in our planning study, at least this is what I, there's really three things that are going on at the same time. The chief's concerned about safety of the roads. Most of that has to do with speeding. Doesn't have to do, and it's not much we can do outside of our, of our local roads other than controlled speeding. There may be small things, but there's not tremendous things. There's the bike and pedestrian connection systems that are really something that we can implement outside of a corridor study or outside of a safety study. And then there's the townwide study, which is really a corridor study, which goes towards the SCROG. I thought, what I left was that we were going to focus on like what you did in Simsbury, a bike head study, which I thought we were talking about a seventy-five thousand dollar budget and not trying to take on the whole town as a townwide study because we wanted to let the corridor study for the state roads kind of take some precedent. But that was what I heard. I might be wrong. So I think this is, I think it's over budget. I would like to see seventy-five.
I don't think you're, I don't think you're wrong, but I also think that we don't necessarily I don't think you're, I don't think you're wrong, but I also think that we don't necessarily know what details of the study are gonna be at this point, we need to sort of identify that before we put a number in.
And it's fine.
Two fifty is sort of a placeholder, that's really important, I mean.
That's a big number.
And maybe it's too much, a placeholder.
So we had talked about doing this in coordination kind of with the P O C D, correct? So the, I know Planning and Zoning has looked to do some studies involving the P O C D. So how can this tie into that so we're not spending money twice? Can they be tied in? I guess, I know that they've been advocating for that also.
Can you elaborate on P O C D, I'm sorry?
Planning and Conservation Development.
Plan, yeah. Yes, we, when, we did discuss this a little bit last year, when we approved a sort of accelerated, P O C D was technically due a year later, but the council moved it up a year in response to a lot of the development activity, everything else, so. And we did talk about at the time, you know, traffic is a major proportion of the P O C D and the pace of development where it's, where it's built, so. Again, I'd have to confirm a little more, I'm not sure if there's any, I'm not sure the extent of any traffic studies being proposed with consultants now working on the P O C D, I don't know if there are any there, you know.
Are they currently, they're currently working on that?
Yeah.
They are.
So this, this would help them immensely, I think.
Absolutely, yeah, I think it would, sure. I mean, depending on what it is, yes, that's why they've been asking for.
Right.
So we're gonna, if that part of our town is gonna be doing the same work, we're planning a combined forces.
Well, it doesn't sound like they're gonna be doing one, but if we did one, it would certainly.
It could add to the P O C Ds.
Yeah, exactly. Well, it won't be done in time to, to be able to, our P O C D.
Yeah, once our P O C D.
P O C D's already started.
Yeah.
It's started, but it's not finished.
It's not gonna go two more years. The townwide traffic study like this will be a year process by the time you define it, go out to RFP, get it back, you're talking about a year, I, I think that Conservation Health will be probably be completed by then, I would guess. Most consultants don't hang on for two years to do that Conservation. Well, I know that P and Z is very anxious for us to do it. But what is it, what are we doing? I, I don't know what we're doing for the town. Townwide traffic study is such a broad term, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is a big number. I'm fine with doing something, I don't wanna waste money just saying we're doing a study for the sake of doing a study unless we know what we're trying to accomplish. And we know that the, we have two major state highway corridors in the town that we don't wanna study if we don't have to because that should be, that should be work that's done by. Yeah, and that's something that I'm, I'm assuming the COG would do as well.
Well, how much coordination is there?
Wouldn't it make sense for us to, to consult a planner, a consultant, something that does tracks, give us a better idea of what, what the difference is?
What our needs are right now.
I think that's kind of a first step. We're all talking about traffic study, like John said, it's pretty broad. I don't, I don't really know exactly what that means either, so.
And how, how detailed is it gonna get?
I agree with you, Jim, the question is, what do we do now in terms of a budget? I'm, I'm, I don't know, I think this is important, I'm not trying to diminish the importance of it, I just don't wanna budget for something if we don't need it and I don't wanna underbudget and diminish our ability to kind of move forward and make progress, so I, I don't know the right answer, I'm.
Maybe just explain the process to me a little bit better here. So if we budget for two hundred and fifty thousand and the study comes back and it's a hundred, we're not obliged that, we've gone through this before.
Correct.
So if we budget for two fifty, we're not.
We could cancel that appropriation once we know.
Right, after we've been the bill, you cancel the other one fifty.
But it is still, it is still out there as a, as a big number that actually.
Because then it affects, I mean, yeah, I mean, in short term, I'll be using it in like that projection.
I'd rather not question for more than we need without, without.
Well, I, I don't wanna see the bike pad stuff kind of slow down again, so can we do a hundred thousand, start that work?
I mean, yeah, we could combine them into one item or do we want to do two items? That's the other question, it could be, that's probably a way to word it. We happen to be in the police section here, I mean, we have a planning, P O C D was in the planning section, but there's no. I see there is, yeah, that's the same one, it's planning developments for the canal dredging. Just in terms of where it's located here, we could put, or planning studies or, you know, traffic in corridor and bicycle pedestrian.
Isn't there, John, isn't there, there must be some idea where traffic is gonna be increased by the belt and all that, there must be some range, isn't there?
Oh, yeah, it was already, it was already projected.
Okay.
But it's a, it's, it's a much bigger deal to take that projection and distribute it throughout the town with the other growth that's going on with the town. A townwide traffic study, I guess, would be looking at the increase in traffic on all the roads in the town, including the state roads. But like the chief said, I mean, in most of our rural, our rural, our, our town roads, there's not a lot of opportunities to make a lot of changes, and his biggest concern that he deals with is not capacity, it's just speed, speed and safety occasionally. So I personally like the idea of the bike pad focus right now, and I like the idea of getting guidance on what we should do beyond that. And not pay for a corridor study if it's gonna be done by someone else that's paying for it, incorporate that into it, as opposed to budget for a full town traffic study, which might include looking at those major state corridors that might be more appropriately done by agencies that have control over, over improvements. The problem with if we do a study on the state corridors and we suggest improvements, the state's gotta agree to that, and then, so it's like, it's, it's.
They all work together though, correct?
Eventually, yeah.
No, not, not, not the bureaucracy side of it, the, you know, we have to, if we're studying it, when Route ten factors into mountain road, Route ten factors into West Main Street, so if we have a corridor study that sits over here and then we have a town traffic study that sits over here and no one is bothering to connect the two, then what's the point? I guess that's my, my, you know, we're talking about the COG study and then we're talking about a town study, I just wanna make sure that they work together.
If we focus on the bike pad at seventy-five thousand, which I think is, we all agree is probably a reasonable number based on what we spent and with inflation, et cetera. And maybe we add another seventy-five thousand for some townwide analysis and guidance and kind of, you know, without going to full two fifty, because I'm not sure we'll get all of it for two fifty, I just don't know, maybe just pull it in a little, but not ignore this concept of what else should we be doing? I don't know the answer, I'm not a traffic engineer, I'm an engineer, but it's highly specialized now.
When the police chief asked for two fifty, what was his rationale for two fifty?
Is there a reason? While who's saying that there, we talked to some other chiefs in other towns, I'm not sure.
He also talked about the prison cell.
Yeah.
We have no, you know, we have no basis.
I don't know if they were apples and apples to Cheshire, but I think he felt the two fifty would be more than comfortable to cover whatever it is.
That's probably why, I want, I think you should talk to somebody.
It was a conservative number, for sure.
Are we deciding tonight?
Oh, yeah.
This is our final decision?
Well, is it final? I don't know, it's final.
I, yeah, I don't know.
Yes.
This is the last time we. I don't know, no.
No, not necessarily.
No, we're still getting, we've still got a bulk, we could do a, we could do one final deliberation, but, oh, you gotta put all the stuff together.
I mean, if it's, if it's one project that needs, you know, again, yeah, if we need an interim meeting before, July ninth was the tenant adoption date at our council meeting, right? So, again, if it's one project that we need to get feedback on a number and tell people what we found, we can probably, we can do that, you know, I guess it just depends a lot of the assets.
So why don't we, why don't we make it make sense?
We do need resolutions.
What can we do for two fifty, does it make sense? I'll be able to explain it to you as to what, what side of the. I talked to some of my traffic engineers and say, what could be accomplished for two fifty, what do they think is appropriate outside the bike pad study, which I think everybody's focused on getting done, how we connect sidewalk systems, bike systems, pedestrians, interconnecting. Give us a firm number for the two? Well, at least say, what, what would you accomplish if you spent two fifty? What would you accomplish in the town of Cheshire outside the bike pad if you were spending two fifty and other, just get an idea of what we're accomplishing.
I'd like to also hear from the police chief, if this directed, if this number is directed from him, he was pretty honest about his back of the napkin for the other one, so if he's, this is just out of the blue for.
I mean, by that math, this could be, you know, eighty billion dollars.
But if he's gone to other municipalities and they have exactly done this, then I would tend to test.
That sounded kind of what the case was.
But the chief has made this request many times over the last like decade, has it always been two fifty, Sean, you know, or?
No, it was less.
Less requests was.
I, yeah, he and I last emailed about it last year or in, I was twenty-three. He was, he had spoken to, when is this time? That was two years ago. He had sent an estimate, or this particular town is not in Kansas, they had paid for citywide traffic study, they paid a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. He spoke with reference to Tom Bond this morning, recommended between two hundred and two fifty for the type of study we're discussing.
What did they say they would do for that?
You know, it's a, it's a.
And Tom Bond is, has plenty of experience doing this, so.
Yeah, he, he emailed back from the board director in Johnson, Iowa. The city did not issue a request proposal, local engineer Johnson used a consultant as our city engineer, or they use the, they use a consultant, the town uses a consultant as their city engineer, they perform a velocity wide traffic study, traffic flow is one of the issues, our residents identified the resident survey we perform every, every year I've attached the agreement. Off our city engineer.
Yeah.
He, Neil's email to him was exactly what we're talking about, a very request from town council, comprehensive, townwide traffic study, you address many of these issues, highlight on your website, I'm wondering if it might be better if your chief proposes, I don't know if I should be asking the council for a hundred thousand, three hundred thousand now, just sort of, that was, which, some of the evidence was going to show, but it's all in what we're asking, you know, how comprehensive is the traffic study, how, what specific issues are there?
Do we have a baseline?
Resident surveys, are there things?
Do we have a baseline?
That's over to Johnson, I guess.
A previous traffic study ever done in the town of Cheshire?
No.
Never, so there's no baseline?
Not comprehensive.
Just piecemeal for a traffic light or?
Or each, for each, each development goes in, sometimes they do something.
But developers are using their own people.
But they're, yeah, they're a little.
Typically, yeah.
So we have no, this would, are we looking for a comprehensive type of base?
Well, like with Johnson, yes, I think he can talk to one of his traffic engineers there, that's how I, and give us an idea, I think, right?
Yeah, I'm not sure what it means, the comprehensive traffic study, I mean, we're looking at safety, we're looking at, at capacity of roadways systems.
Congestion, yeah.
And I don't know the answer, that's what I'm saying, it's, it's, it's comprehensive means obviously comprehensive, but, you know, take in everything, but I'm not sure what we need in Cheshire.
No, we've learned that these traffic studies are so incredibly specifically worded for their use.
Right.
So you have.
We could word, for the benefit of the town, how can the town learn from? I mean, just in terms of, I'm not to belabor this, but I can circulate this, this question versus what, under the document that he attached, said for this particular town or city, I guess. The comprehensive citywide traffic studies, safety study has the following objectives: Identify existing traffic flow congestion points in the city and special areas, i.e. business districts and the areas of schools. Congestion issues with focus on major traffic corridors in the city. Number two, identify any systemway deficiencies as related to traffic operation and signal technology and protocols, sparkware and software. Number three, review existing high crash locations, including pedestrian related crashes. Number four, seek stakeholder and public input on traffic operations and traffic safety strategies. Five, recommend both short and long range solutions and strategies aimed at improving traffic flow and congested corridors, traffic safety in high risk locations, special areas as well as systemway technology solutions if any needed. Next, recommend potential policy changes to enhance safety and traffic flow. Next, prioritize the list of needed improvements and develop class estimates and cost benefit analysis to recommend solutions and strategies. And finally, develop a strategic plan for implementing improved recommendations. So it's kind of a soup to nuts, that was a hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
See, and the truth of the matter is for Cheshire, ninety percent of that work would be focused on the state, the state highways, that's where all our access issues are, corridor congestion issues are, et cetera, so that's why I think we need to think it through just a little bit because technically, the, you know, regional planning agencies will do that work in conjunction with the D O T and maybe want to, but maybe we'll learn that it's better for us to take the initiative, I don't know the answer, I don't know, I don't know the answer.
And also the state is gonna be redoing all the traffic signals on ten.
Yeah.
So, you know, again, I would, I would just like to be proactive on some of this and get it before we're, you know, inundated and the work has already been done on these things and then we're, then we're saying like, looks like we should have done this last year.
So just for instance, on the North End, when all those work was done, the state made us look at the increased traffic here, and they said, you need to look at this signal, this signal, this signal, this signal, it didn't go very far, it went to the, you know, the entrance ramps on the other side of the bridge, didn't go down any further on Route ten, didn't go into Southink, they decided where the increased traffic had to be looked at, but the impact of that on the center of Cheshire with the other traffic, that was never looked at.
And that's all hypothetical.
Yeah, but you can project.
You can project it.
Yeah, but it is, yeah, it gets more hypothetical the first route you go, yeah.
That's right.
Yeah, so there's a lot to be looked at, the question is, is that our responsibility or is someone else gonna do it for us? And maybe it's better for us to take a proactive approach, I, I can ask, and someone may say, yeah, no, it's really good if Cheshire takes a proactive approach, you'll get more out of it, you'll take, you'll, you'll become, you'll get to the top of the ranking if D O T, I just don't know.
But, but the other thing is though, I mean, if it does come out and there's issues at our, on the state roads, we can't do anything about it.
We can write it down on paper and then have this.
Yeah, we can advocate for our.
Yeah, we can advocate it, but yeah.
D O T's.
Yeah, but it's nothing.
I was thinking widen the road, I'm not sure we're getting there.
At least it's knowledge and it's a baseline of where we are now, how we're changing, just, I, I think just for public information consumption, to have things written down and studied, especially right now with the world and the developments going on, all the talk, the talk of pedestrian safety, bike safety, increased traffic congestion from development, I really think, I, I know for me, and I know it's been expressed before, this is, we can't keep putting it off, waiting for development to, to be established and then do the study, because it's, we need to know where to direct development, I think, at this point in Cheshire's growth, because if we keep putting it in places without a comprehensive study, we could, we could be doing better, I think.
So, so we're gonna, we're only to two fifty and temporarily and then see if we get some clarity on what we can do with that money.
I agree. Add a bike pad master plan to the title for that two fifty.
Yeah, I think, because we can see from that description, the traffic study's not gonna technically get us what we really want, which is more focused on the bike pad. So we're gonna eventually get to a place where we eliminate the seventy-five, correct? Is that what you're saying, Sean? Eliminate the bike pad and include that as part of the.
It's not in there right now.
Oh, it is, it's part of the town, okay.
That came out of the meeting last week, but we, I, I didn't put it in yet.
So, yeah, so let's leave this.
I like that it's directly in there.
But it's sort of incorporated in the two fifty, and again, know that we don't have to decide everything, just budget go around only because you have a hundred and seventy thousand of, of planning money, again, we just don't like seeing your marketing, some of that, but if you, if something came up along the way, then you can supplement that or, or do something else, that money is there.
We could.
Before we move on from that, just, Sean, you're gonna speak to people in the field and get back to us.
I'll get some guidance in, you know, we can, I'll talk to Sean, maybe, and you can, or Peter, or you can distribute an email, or I'll send an email about what I find so we don't have to wait.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah.
I would like some clarity too, if we're gonna do a townwide traffic study now, does it have the capacity to project what the, once the schools are online, what that will look like for those roads as well?
It's a good, it's a very good point, it should.
Okay, yeah.
But that's, it's good to make sure that, yeah.
That is gonna be a huge traffic burden in a totally different pattern. Can the study project that or is it just based on what is?
They should be able to.
Wasn't there a study done for the Jarvis and Barry, I guess, there was, right?
Yeah, there were specific things like that, like any other development, like those had their own traffic studies, like they were a private development.
To your point, like that, that study for the, when they designed it is for.
That area.
Adjacent to, right, so it's not affecting, you know, how it dumps out to eighty-four or whatever, so.
I wonder if we put up like, on the TV, a map of Cheshire and then all the existing traffic studies that have, that have been done for all the different developments, if we could patch out all of the area in Cheshire that has an existing traffic study and maybe, maybe comprehensively gather up that information.
Yeah, it depends on, you know, how old it.
Just, just as a baseline, and it wasn't done by us, it wasn't done by a, a third party, but still, it's some tangible information that's been paid for and produced.
Some of the, some of the ones that were done by builders, are we, are we privy to that, did they file that with us?
It would be part of any developer.
Planning and zoning. So I guess.
It's a tedious task though.
I wonder how many different traffic studies have been done, that's something I'm grateful that exists.
As one of these developments.
If you listen to the traffic studies at P and Z, it'd only be about ten cars at the peak traffic time.
Right, that's what I'm saying, they're tainted, so.
Yeah, it's, but it's still some data, there's, there's actually be some.
They're actually not, they're based on, they're based on I T, I T data, it's, it's reality, not everybody reads at the same time, that's why they look at peak hours, so not everybody reads it, that's what, because not everybody works anymore either, but.
I work from home, but I, I'm kidding.
They're not, they're not, they're not tainted, no, no traffic engineer just comes up with numbers, they're based on, on, on a lot of data that continuously gets pushed into the system, but, but it is. Fire emergency management.
Fire has nothing, other four fronts together.
So we, yep, so we skip that page and then we get into a lot of stuff.
Am I looking at the right thing here?
So, which one are you going?
You're looking at the fire station?
Yeah.
You got zero.
Oh, right, right. Yeah, so I zeroed that, whoa, I moved. They started keeping on the firewall. Beautiful thing.
Beautiful thing. Moving to public works, nothing until you get to the public works, heavy-duty dump truck, front line cloud truck at three eighty. Wait a second. Are we on, which page are we on?
Public works.
Public works.
Sorry.
Public works bolt.
No, I can take it.
Yep.
Two, the next item is the two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars.
That's the excavator.
There's some discussion of.
That, ouch. I'm okay with bumping that out of here. I.
It sounded like it wasn't going to be used that much.
Right, and we can, we can rent one.
I always, I always think, Dan was like wanting us to bump it, I think he threw it in there so we could bump it out.
It might be, I mean, I will tell you, somewhat ironically, it is currently waiting on parts, so it's not functioning right now. But I think those parts are on the way, Dan reminded me of that today. But we also, yeah, it, the uses for it are within our control often, some emergency response, of course, but it's, it's not as much of a problem. Emergency vehicle, of course, so we could lease it and revisit it next year.
Okay.
So, yes, to moving that two fifty-two to the next one.
Yes.
Yes, great. Road improvement, most popular.
My, my number there was one point eight.
Mine's one million.
One million, wow.
Because we're, we're doing, we're doing East Johnson and Industry, which is two million right there already. And I just, I mean, we're, so that's, that's like almost four million dollars on roads in one year. I, I just, if we, either that or do we, do we do East Johnson now, or I think industrial needs it. I mean, East Johnson really needs it too, I mean, you, we have some heavy-duty trucks going there, but I mean, that's four million dollars that will go to a referendum, and I, I think that we'd have a tough time getting four million dollars for road improvements in this town.
Especially the next, next election.
So, I mean, with a million dollars, I mean, even that could be a tough thing, because you're, we're going to be asking three million dollars for, for, for road improvements.
Do we know how many projects have been bumped year to year to year to year? As far as road, I know scenic is one, but are there others like that that have just been kicked down the road verbally?
Be improved.
I don't, I don't have a number.
Are there lots?
I think you've identified more roads than, indeed, San Antonio Parish in the last three years than were identified before.
Yeah, scenic wasn't bumped, scenic was, the, the two million is just for road resurfacing. Scenic was a problem, they didn't know what was wrong with it.
Sanding project.
That was a project, yeah, because they had to figure out, it was more of a road reconstruction. I don't know what other reconstructions we bump, but the resurfacing has always been a kind of consistent, fairly big number. I don't have a problem with taking the resurfacing down for one year too with the other specific improvements, but that's, I know we do a good job. You know, I'm a civil engineer, I should be supportive of resurfacing roads all the time, but I think one year, a one-year kind of reduction where they, you know, more focused on where they spend the money is not the end of the world.
We've been using about a million and a half, correct?
It's average about one point seven, one point seven.
I mean, one point five is the lowest time I've been here.
But.
Yeah. I just look at the two big projects that we have on there, it's, it's two million dollars right there. That's a lot of money on roads, and then we're gonna have to put another million, is, is a lot.
We did something similar with, we combined the two of them last, I think we combined the first phase of East Johnson with the general.
Yeah, I would think that we'd have to combine it into a referendum question, have to combine them all. But I think, you know, industrial needs it, because that's where we're replacing.
Yeah, so unfortunately, industrial and the culvert.
Yeah.
Both projects, separate projects, well, first it was supposed to be a road replacement, then it was determined that the culvert had to be replaced. Then both of them became victims of global cost increases, where they, by the numbers we had, we adopted good numbers, and just ballooned in the last three years. So, both of them have had supplemental, something to last referendum, and this is the last, this would be something along the route specifically. Sorry, that's very bad.
And I know these other improvements, they're on the, they must be in a different.
Yes, they are.
Yes, next page.
Next page, yes.
One point six is there.
All right, so let's, let's start the, let's start the bidding on road improvements. We're at, we're at two million, where do you want to pay?
I was gonna split the difference at one point four, one minute.
Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable with the one million, but I'm not.
I mean, it's a good point, that makes about the additional, I mean, it's a, it's a big ticket into one point six. I don't know, many seems pretty steep to me to cut, to cut our ongoing road program, but I, I can be convinced, so.
So that many here would be.
One minute.
Yeah, I don't have a number, I don't know.
I would stick to the one point five, something like that.
Are there road projects in other places in this?
Yes.
That's where it's at.
That's where it's at.
Too big, too big.
Or that's what.
Too big, that's two million.
So I'm good going as close to, between one point four and one million, as close to that number as we can get for this particular budget line.
My question would be, is there a list of what streets are needed and where is the high priority versus the low priority? Where does this number come from? That's why I don't remember that, how do we know this is.
Yeah, it's an ongoing, obviously, the roads are, they're constantly, they're so deteriorated, right? So there's an ongoing program, there's a road grading system that they use. We do somewhat intentionally not say what this specific promise, what this specific money will go to, because if things change, or cost prices or asphalt's up, then you told people we're doing.
This street and, and why not.
We hear about it, so, but, but generally, yes, there, I mean, in, well, similarly, there are, there's, there's a very sophisticated road grading system that I think Dan or Merrick touched on last meeting a little bit. You know, that, one of the better evaluations, honestly, is that if you drive around, you know, we all kind of do it now, just sort of pay attention to how the roads look and feel, and we can certainly point you in the direction of some of the ones that are probably in need of a, of a full million paid in the next year or two.
But like the sidewalk policy, is there a grading system?
Yes.
You know, that's my question is, so.
Yeah, there, a hundred percent is, yes.
The, the short answer to your question, or maybe it's not so short. So in other words, with the, with whatever number, whether it's a million or two million, we will pave, strip, seal, whatever.
Chip seal, chip seal.
Yeah, chip seal, whatever the terminology is.
No longer hot in place.
The worst roads, and get as far down the list as we can, based on the dollar amount that they're given. And that's where they'll cut off, and then it'll pick up the following year.
Considering that we're going to be doing these other two big projects, since they're in town, it could be a little bit less, so we could give a little fervor too. I mean, it's, you know, I think, I just think that asking our taxpayers to approve four million dollars for road improvements is, is gonna be a, a big ask, and I think it's.
Paying for it's gonna be big.
Yeah, it's gonna be tough to, to, to get, I'm just curious, what's the, what's the highest amount of, we've ever asked, had a referendum for road improvements? I, I don't know if we've ever had this much.
Two years ago, it was two point two million.
Yeah.
But that's because it was combined with, go to page three forty-three of your budget.
In that half?
Oh, yeah, the roads will, roads will, always the number one.
We're gonna be in.
Yep, that's not, that's not capturing.
We did two point four million in November of twenty-two, but that was just designated the road improvement program, but that was combined with the first phase of East Johnson.
Right. Right.
So it was a million, it was net, like a million.
Is it atomized on the road, or is it say what it's?
It's just road improvements.
Oh, yeah.
It's never, yeah, it would never be atomized by the road unless it's a specific road reconstruction.
Like just East Johnson, East Johnson.
East Johnson would. And that was unique, that was honestly, that, part of that was just to count it in the number.
I mean, just to bring it to, how about one point two million? It's kind of a little, all right?
I still don't. I still think two hundred thousand dollars is too much, but, you know, that's what everyone wants.
With some people who are one point five, I was just trying to.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's, yeah, it's up, gonna get to the voters, I would say.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say also, the further you go back, ten years ago, the cost of paving the road now is probably closer to a couple of minutes.
Yeah.
Years ago, so you are getting a little less. And then in order to maintain and preserve the life of our roads, we do use anyone's favorite, you know, double, chip seal, chip seal, and all that great stuff. Unfortunately, we probably will, just to be clear, this million is not gonna be straight, I don't know, this will be a lot of, they'll have to designate how many miles they can hit, they'll probably do a lot more chip seal as a proportion than they would at higher numbers, but.
Even if we have some other?
I mean, certainly, I have a budget, but I think at price, at the, yes, other than maybe if, when, when Tilcon's in town to do paving, as I mentioned, so today, we're doing Edwards, we pick up Sheila Lake and some others, because they're close enough to needing it, and they're already in that area. There's a, there's a lot of efficiency that happens with roping. But, yeah, I would just know that, it, it, at that dollar amount, you know, you're not gonna get as. Tilcon won't be able to do as much, or they won't be so willing to do as much, if that won't pay the price that you want to do.
They're gonna be in Cheshire a lot, it looks like. You're, we're at that in the.
Those are coordinated around the same time, plus our access drives and everything else, is that, there's definitely something to be said about. We're paying, there's a lot of paving in this first year, I totally agree. I'm just trying to manage expectations for how many miles you'll hit a full lot of, like, if we cut it from two million to a million, you're gonna get less.
I think Merrick said with the, whatever we spent last year, one point seven last year, he said we get eight miles, something like that, not much.
No, it's, it's not a lot, so. All right, are we, did we settle on one two, one point two?
I just, I know Don didn't, I don't have a basis for it, I just.
Yeah, I mean, that's whatever you want, so I, I still think.
I'll capitalize, but.
We're going to.
Yeah.
Do you want it higher? Be closer to one and a half, but again, the consensus is that that's too much.
I'm trying to give myself actively voting for this referendum and all the, all of the stuff that's being asked right now, it's actually just.
You're gonna be asked for three point two million dollars, basically, for, for, for road improvements. That's a, that's a.
On, yeah, on three different.
Yeah, yeah, but it's, it's gonna be one referendum, probably, we'll probably combine them, right?
Yeah, we, we.
I don't think so. I think they'll be standalone, I don't think.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
You did buy seven twenty-three, but usually there's.
Yeah, because they were lower, or it was low, what was the number last year?
Last year's.
What was, what was the referendum item last year?
One point six million road improvement program.
Yep.
Seventy-six percent ago. Next item, two point four, so two point four million in twenty twenty-two.
Percent of what?
Okay.
That is a high percent.
Yeah.
I don't think we've ever had a road improvement reference.
Yeah, now that's the other thing, road improvement never fails. So, we're gonna put that to the test this year, Don.
Yeah, well, that's the thing, is because, you know, it, it's, it, these are the two roads, East Johnson and Industry are where people don't live, and people who, who use those roads may not be residents here, so, and it's gonna be, that's what I.
Those always drop, right? I mean, industrial out, right, that was sixty-four percent.
Yeah, a lot of players, like, these are where our taxpayers, you know that.
These are big taxpayers.
They're taxpayers.
Zudo's paying a fair share of that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They are too, too big, important commercial.
Yeah, they are, so I, I, I pray to God that they pass, but if they don't.
Seriously, we could combine them, but yeah, at this point, with, yeah, I don't know. We'd be testing it if we put.
Maybe we could combine, yeah, exactly. Or maybe we could combine industrial and East Johnson as one, I don't know.
Can you word it properly, so it's like, improving the commercial?
That might increase the chance of getting.
Yeah.
But they're really talking, no.
But it might explain that it's not just because East Johnson needs it, you know, repaving.
If that, if, if something like that, that would be in the, that would be in the little, the little tax, the text.
Right.
About seven percent of the people read it.
And no seven read it like two weeks early, they make sure they know every single word before they go on.
They already know how they're voting.
Right.
All right, so.
All right.
Moving on.
Peter, if I, if I can make a suggestion, I think a lot of these we've already agreed on, and there's like only three or four items, I think, that were, that were, I mean.
I wanna pick and choose.
I mean, I looked at the big picture, we already.
All right, well, let's, yeah, we can go through them quick. Sidewalk maintenance, who are good with a hundred? Sidewalk extension, everybody's good with a hundred?
I think everybody looked at most of these already, and we, no one was, we weren't gonna cut any of these out.
Yeah, because we lowered that.
Jarvis sidewalk.
Yeah, Jarvis is gonna be the big ticket item for the moment.
MS four, we, we said we were doing, we had no choice.
Yep, the one point six for East Johnson.
Wait, we just said that.
The stormwater thing?
Parking lots at Barlam.
Yeah, we have to do stormwater for MS four and stuff.
The Lakeview culvert. Intersection alignment of weeks, road reconstruction, industrial, public works, just keep turning pages. We're at the top of.
Public works.
Road reconstruction, public works, grounds of equipment.
That, I'll go. Oh, you're way back.
No, you're, you went way too many.
You will read it faster, right there.
Next one, it's the Elmwood, Elmwood pump station.
Yep.
Now we're on public, now public works sewer alarm.
Yeah, I, I find it real tough to say no to any of the, I know the, Sean's got an asterisk at the bottom for the heavy-duty vehicle equipment, W P C D two thirty.
Yeah, so that.
That's an adjustment.
That one, yeah.
The two thirty we approved in the operating budget, the contracted version of that, so we don't need the two hundred and thirty thousand dollar truck. And then up ahead, as you see in years two through five, the other orange there is just, discussion was that we were gonna try to move the in-kind.
Yes, to the operating budget.
Operating budget.
Can we just go back real quick, sorry guys, on the, on the heavy-duty truck thing? So we're, we're buying a new one for public works, a new dump truck, right, three eighty, something like that.
Yes. Yeah, it's a different kind of truck, though, it's a different kind of truck. It's not just a dump truck.
I think it's.
Not just a dump truck.
So what I was just wondering is, if, if we're getting rid of something from public works, can that be used by W P C D instead of them getting a new, a new truck? But they're not buying a truck anymore. So we are now in the, I'm gonna go to, we're not getting this, because we don't have, it's not employed driving it anymore.
Got you, okay.
They're actually all around too. All right. But yes, point, point two.
And then the, the boiler added the roof repair, which brought the recreation item from one eight to two twenty-five.
Yep.
So, yeah, that one, the, we're on recreation now?
Yep.
That's the orange there.
Yep.
We have a forty-five thousand dollar number for roof repair, so Peter's saying, you just add that for boiler replacement to boiler replacement and roof repair?
Yeah.
We already, we're gonna go by the skate park? We, I guess we sort of skipped another, but yeah, if, if there's consensus on the skate park at one ten, the general open space, including pickleball court conversion and the disco, is a hundred thousand, signing features, et cetera.
All right, so Jim is, Jim is asking about the skate park for one ten.
We're spending an awful lot of money on this, I just wanted, do we have to do that right now?
Were we talking about not doing it in concrete and doing?
So the, the reason it's there now, right, the, the original proposal was to do it in, in concrete, much more expensive.
And that was the two seventy-three.
There's an opportunity now, back to paving conversation, a lot of paving, we're doing the access drives, doing the pool parking lot, in order to make all of that look, uh, deal. Connection apartments out. While you're there, for a relatively small amount of money, you can do.
For the low, low.
You can pave. Yeah, you could pave the skate park area while the.
Skateboard.
Would they, right, it would be more expensive to do the same project next year because the machines are not there.
It would be, right.
Oh, yeah.
The number we had to do it while all that stuff is there is only twenty-two thousand dollars. The rest of that appropriation is thirty thousand, for the uninstall and reinstall of the ramps themselves.
Yep.
Always felt like a high number to me, I don't know if that's specialized, it's something we can have some of our folks do, I don't know, but, that was the number that was in the proposal. And then new equipment of fifty-eight thousand dollars. Have to do that, that was gonna be a new feature, a, adding a quarter pipe and pyramid corner on the east side of.
Oh, you got it.
One of the.
Yeah, all your, so that's what makes them, the one hundred and ten. Let's move on.
Yeah, John, so John two would be paving.
Twenty-two would be paving, I think.
Finish question, if we waited a year, that twenty-two could be maybe. But it's, it's, so instead of it being a hundred and ten, if you remove the features, how much would it be? Two new features?
Twenty-two plus the.
Twenty-two plus the uninstall and reinstall is fifty-two thousand or so. So half of that, to resurface it.
So you'd go from, yeah, you, you'd take out fifty thousand, which is the new features.
Right, right, that's what I would be.
Like, give her the new features.
I, we need to resurface it, right, you're saying that that's dangerous, so.
We've tried to crack seal it multiple times, they, they separate, and you get that, that kind of. We've tried to crack seal it multiple times, they separate and you get that, that kind of.
Not for weeds.
Yeah, that's not, that's not safe.
Becomes a tricky activity, it is a liability issue that we, yeah, we. So, we need to address it in some fashion, so, if we did it correctly, then we would not. I mean, for some time, right? Post tension would last a lot longer, it's obviously much more expensive.
Right.
The tumors, just like our roads, should get a good, like, you know, black asphalt should be.
How long has that been now? That skate park, my son.
2004.
Yeah, twenty years.
Twenty years?
Yeah. And John did bring up at the last meeting about doing the curbs in concrete versus, because they, they're already breaking. Dan was gonna check into that?
I don't have anything on that yet.
Cause I'd be curious, cause I think, I kind of agree with him, I mean, we don't wanna be putting, and then having it first year, the plows digging them all up and looking like. We're, that would go under the paving part of it, right?
Back on the prior, ages ago.
So, I don't, on the skate thing, I don't, I mean, I was thinking of something that we didn't know needed to do right now, but it sounds like since we're doing all the other stuff at the same time, I think we should keep it even with features.
I would go with the features. If you're gonna, if you're gonna spruce it up, you might as well, if you're gonna do it, make it all look nice.
Regret your own rule about.
I like your attempt.
No, it was good.
You take your 50 and you go pave the whole street.
All right.
One thing, one thing on the.
On the.
I never want to hear about concrete again.
That's all right.
I was just joking.
On the, on the park improvements, the disc golf, etc. I'm, the pickleball courts are heavy, the tennis courts are not, I think we need a, a much more. Substantial plan on pickleball than just say, well, we're gonna just take the rest of those tennis courts. I'm also getting a little nervous, we're kind of not being, maybe not being respectful to those few apartments that are on the other side of Stony, is it Stony Hills? Stony Hills, those people are in apartments, they maybe not be complaining. But that noise is loud, and now we're gonna get closer to them with more pickleball courts, without any consideration as to whether or not that's gonna have an impact on them. I would rather think this through before we just commit to doing more pickleball courts over there and think. You know, if we're gonna do something, for instance, on the other side of the street with an RFP or something, that's a great spot, because there's no neighbors to, to add in more pickleball. I'd rather not just see us jump in and add more there.
You wanna piss off the inmates.
They'll join.
They're not even close there. I don't, I just, I, I, I just, not so much the money here, it's just the decision to do that without thinking it through. Those people are maybe getting a little bit annoyed, but not saying anything, and because.
They'll do sound abatement, with like ten pines or something?
Huh?
Sound abatement with ten pines?
I don't know what you can do, but we're gonna get really close to them if we convert more. Well, that's why I, I don't want them put on, sell it early, because that's in a, that's a residential area, and I, I know the neighbors are gonna start complaining. We need, we need to think about that, I think, more globally than just, you know, Band-Aid it.
And pickleball's popular now, but I just don't know the staying power of pickleball.
I think it's gonna. I, I, I don't, I don't play.
Careful, man.
They're listening, they're listening.
And they're happy with what they're hearing, but I, I'm at the high school all the time, and I've seen more and more younger kids playing pickleball on those tennis courts. I have seen more pickleball playing on the tennis courts in the last.
On the south end?
At the high school.
Yeah.
At the high school, I've seen more.
At the youth's.
No.
At the high school?
Yeah, to youth's, Sarah.
Is it? It's, it's right, it's all the way, I thought those were the high school tennis courts.
They are.
Um, I've seen more younger kids playing pickleball on that recently than tennis.
So, I just think we need to think it through before we commit to doing this, I'd rather John, you know, just kind of consider those neighbors and consider, you know, a couple of pickleball courts isn't gonna solve the problem, I think we need a more. Comprehensive approach to how we're gonna add more pickleball courts in the community. We might have to redevelop that park someday, I mean, that, that, that end of the park, just to, to do, to do more things over there, I think, so.
Anyway. How much of the, how much of the 100 is the pickleball conversion?
21,000.
21,000, okay. So, are you looking to drop in if I had 21,000 or?
I wasn't as, I, I'm happy to do it 80 and make the point that we're not ready to get that done yet until it's got through. I know the pickleball people won't be happy, but I just think it's just, I don't think we're thinking about one.
And it's, we're, we're taking, how many courts, how many tennis courts are there now?
Three left.
So, we're, we're taking one and making two pickleball. We're really not getting all that closer to.
We're not closer to Stony, these apartments.
It's a, it's a tennis, and it's, it's a tennis court closer, is basically what you're doing.
I live across the street in those apartments when I first moved to Cheshire when I was a kid, and couldn't hear, can't, couldn't hear, can't hear anything. That's fine, I didn't, no, I just drove by and looked at it.
Pickleball is louder than tennis, but.
It is.
I feel like they're playing pickleball on those tennis courts anyway, so I don't think there would really be a noise reduction.
That's fine, that's fine. I would just rather be the pickleball people for the time being until we, but I think we're gonna have.
Until we come up with a strategy, but yeah, at some point, too. You know, we've, we've heard all kinds of numbers, but I, I still question as to, you know, how many pickleball courts is enough? In other words, we're, we're gonna do these two, and we're gonna be sitting here next year when they're saying, we want the other four, get rid of the two tennis courts, and.
And 33%, 30 to 40% of the people coming are out of town.
Well, and that's, yeah, that's why I asked that question, so, yeah, I'm, I'm okay with taking the one and making two, but. At some point, I think we need to, you know, put a moratorium on pickleball conversions and actually find out.
How many tennis courts are left after this? You convert more, there'll be two there.
Just in general, high school.
Then six, the high school has six full courts and then some. It's like a jungle.
So, there's, there's eight.
That's not what the good ones convert, so it's like an upgrade.
No, 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 it's right next to.
And actually, if we do this, there will be eight pickleball and eight tennis in town.
I'm curious to watch the demographics on the, I'm, I'm curious to see where pickleball goes.
I know, I think.
It's still very popular for, again, more, more popular.
More, more popular because it's, it's cardio healthy and it's orthopedically healthy as well.
And tennis.
There's a separate, there is indoor pickleball, so that might be an option for the future for.
That's, that's the answer for Cheshire, someone's gotta step up and do, you know, a.
Cheshire rap.
A market facility in pickleball that'll take some pressure off. The market's here, people are here, they've got it, you know, you've got 691, you've got all of it, that, that'll happen, and that will take.
Put it next to the hockey rink.
Yeah, sure.
We got a nice lot up in the north end that's gonna be available.
All right, anything else on recreation?
Did we decide on the, on the adaptive turf field, we're gonna go with 100 and do a study this year, is that, is everyone in agreement with that, I don't know how we, if. We talked.
Is that on that?
Yeah, so, the last four items, I know some are out here, so just wanna make sure you all see that they've been added. The linear trail resurfacing year two by 100,000. Bridge deck replacement, 100,000 year five. Maybe you'll do some of that in-house for the works along the way.
It's gonna say on page some of those are really bad disrepairments.
Yeah, we do.
I don't know if that'll last till year five, I, I think those, those boards are deteriorating fast.
We can move it up, and we also, we have replaced some, just in the outbreak bunch of old years, but we can move that 100,000 up.
Yeah, throw, throw it in the year three for right now, the year after the paving, and then we'll, we'll look at it every year.
Maybe we could just have an inspection done on all of them and let us know where.
And then Yankee Expressway property access study, we talked about at the last meeting.
Where was, where was the adaptive field?
The last, last thing.
Why am I not, oh, did I go back to?
It's on recreation, last blue box.
Adaptive turf. Oh, you know why, it's probably on this one, but not on that one, that's correct. Okay, so what are we doing?
100,000.
100,000 is design and, and selection, location?
So, right, 100,000.
So, minus, minus a million one, correct?
Is this the Miracle Field?
It's, it's Miracle Field, it's, again, 1.2 is very much a placeholder number, the idea behind it, just for clarification, was 750 comes from the state, that's what we know. 250 in the state's preparation, or in the state's language, said they assumed there was 250 of non-state funds for a roughly million dollar project. And DOD would be 250 of town money, and then the 1.2 takes care of any other modifications to it, expansions. The 200,000 kind of gap funding if needed would be fundraising efforts, whether it's corporate or. Calvert-Conseer Foundation or whatever else partnerships belong, or that could offset the town share, make the town shares zero. Very much placeholders, one of its on that paper, so.
That's what we have.
So, that goes in year two then, though, showing.
Yeah, so then we put 1.1 in year two, just as a.
Yeah.
So, for margin purposes, though, you have to show the full amount, do you know, you know, we're gonna be.
We show the full amount here, yeah, below the line here, where it says reductions, and again, these aren't filled in.
Even though you're not bonding, the 1.2, all you're bonding is the 230, which will probably pay with CNR anyway and not bond any other, you have to show the full amount of the project.
And in the end, that'll show up at the bottom in the small print here below, also in the bottom language. But for this year, 100,000, we need to design.
Education.
So, the education just matches what Ben's, Ben passed out with Jeff last meeting. So, along the way, they're mostly gonna be in orange, but moving out, some improvements, two years out.
Adding to the ladders.
Yeah, returning the ladders that I cut, because they had 125, I confirmed Ben today, he liked to bid that at 250, so, he means both. Moving on to, I guess nothing on the roof, oh, well, there's 350 for the Dodd roof replacement.
Are those all done by the same company? We did them all together, would that bring up any saving?
Oh, which one?
There's a lot of roof replacements, I'm curious.
We are, we just break it out for the purposes of school. So, in other words, you use the same contractor and say, what would you give us for a price for Highland?
For five rooms, yeah, okay.
I thought that Jim pushed back on, on the roof at Dodd, and they agreed that they were only gonna do some spot repairs over there until we figured long-term what we were doing with Dodd.
I think that's what he's saying, he wants to keep the roofing in there.
Yeah, there was something else, but not.
I think we discussed, because, you know, no matter what, the building is gonna be the building, I mean, must we decide to knock it down?
I thought he pulled back at the beginning, okay.
I think he said, if you're gonna pull something back, he said HVAC, you broke it.
Yes, that's what it was.
Yes.
All right.
Which is, I think, something I might suggest, but anyway. So, we're moving on from roofs, there's 50,000 for design, Highland, moving to now their bulk of their projects under renovation. Is, you'll see the 150 moved out for window replacements, Highland, Doolo. They very much said, though, at the last meeting, the high priority, even though I had cut the window replacements for high school, because there's an existing $700,000 appropriation for that from last year, so it's 50. Been confirmed again today, they'd very much like to see that 500,000 back for a larger effort next summer at Cheshire High, picking up more windows.
I also thought he said he was.
But he.
I also thought he said he was all right with, because he had the money.
He said today on the phone, he could also do that, it's really, there's a little efficiency in picking up more at once, but it's, it's, it's the continued window effort, it's how quickly we pay to do the rest. He has money, he's not spending it this summer.
Let's spend the 750 first and take this 500.
That will be till next summer anyway, because they're not doing it this summer.
Is that right?
Yeah. So, 500 goes away.
They could put that 500 on your three or something.
This next item, the district labter improvements, I think, so the 400, I think, is for the high school and Doolos, like I said. I'm wondering if you can just reduce the 200, just focus on one school at a time? Possibly?
They may not be 200, 200, though.
No, I know. But.
You're saying do 200 and work with it?
I'm just saying, yeah. Maybe it was Dodd and high school, it was high school Dodd, I was a little, pretty sure they just did the last one last year, so the next one.
And do they have anything currently in district lavatory?
The lavatory has to, yes. They have.
Is it specific to either one of those two locations?
They have 35,000 left over from 2015. We go more recently, they have 250,000 for lavatory improvements at Dodd.
But this is for where?
I believe it's just general district-wide, but I can make that.
But they specify Dodd and high school.
What they say, I think it was even listed in.
So, you have 35 and what?
200. Yeah, I think that's language from last year, I think it's. They have 35,000 from 2015, there's lavatory improvements Dodd, 250 that was approved this last year.
So, that's 285.
I'd cut it to two. I think that's all I see here. Unless I'm missing one.
Well, I, I'm, what I like to do is cut it to 115.
Yeah.
And use the 285 that they have, and they've got their 400.
So, it's cut it to one and revisit next year.
Well, they've got, they've got 285, so if we give them, we give them 115, we're still saving 285, but, and they've still got their 400,000. So, we're subtracting 285,000.
Sean, are you okay with that?
And giving them 115.
All right, you're positive the number since you gave us? Oh, no, how many numbers I gave us, yeah.
Districts lab.
I won't speak for Ben. All right, so that's 115. Sorry, first year 115. Okay. District-wide driveway and parking lot, they've asked for the 250. And then, there's HVAC. Those, the district, those were for the high school and Doolo, I believe, from the language that was given.
Do they have current money for district-wide payment? That hasn't been got for.
They have sidewalk and masonry.
It's for doing a lot of paving, they not, they not do some paving?
We got more asphalt coming in this town.
It's like blood concrete, you know, it's.
I mean, Doolo, my, my question, Doolo parking lot is not so bad. They're there all the time. Doolo, the Doolo on Cornwall is all just paved last year. Yeah, so maybe, maybe it wasn't Doolo, but. Well, their, their, their write-up says, remember, they're often talking about future years, because it's asked for the same in multiple future years. The 250 is requested to cover the first phase and anticipate repaving these, complete on worst force basis. Future needs are expected to include the Cheshire High School reentry, transcorp, or group ten. The south student parking lot, the south staff parking lot, and the Doolo upper and lower playgrounds, they did not do those last, that's the upper.
Right.
What do they have unspent from all the years?
So, 14,000 from the Ford event driveway and parking lot.
I don't see. So, how do you see the item paid? So, they, they spent the entire for Doolo. Yeah, I don't see it, in the last four years. Oh, yeah, BOE driveway, parking lot.
They've used it.
I would feel about 100,000 for paving.
What can they get done for 100? Could they do like a upper playground for?
When they put district, I, I.
I know, it's multiple projects.
This is the problem, right, usually it's in order of the way they're listed there, so I would suspect, Doolo, I can't speak for them, it's really like the year, the year or. They usually ask for them on these sheets in sort of an order.
And what's the first, what is the?
Future needs are expected to include CHS management for group ten to Claria.
I don't think it's that bad, I think the parking lot, the parking lot at Cheshire High School's bad with the, the softball fields, that's pretty bad, but the main, main driveway, I don't think it's bad.
I don't think the parking lot's bad either. I mean.
We, we don't look too bad here. Bartlam's gotten pretty bad, but.
All right, what's your, what's your appetite for the 250 district-wide driveway and parking lot? Leave it, touch it?
How about 150?
Firstly, I would just take it away if we're gonna do it, because they're gonna have a hard time doing anything with much less money, I mean, it's not gonna go very far, unless you, they can do the two little things at Doolo, maybe if you do that, they'll do the two things at Doolo if you cut it in half. But I don't mind if they hold off on the entrance to Cheshire High School. But I don't mind if they hold off on the interest at Cheshire High School, that'll last.
Let's just bump it. District drive, let's just bump it a little bit.
My fear, I'm over bumping it, my fear is that we're, our, our budget with regards to schools, especially next year and the year after, might have less room for a bump than this particular year's budget, but that's just my.
Yeah, I mean, I.
It's only my.
I think we're doing pretty good with what we've cut, so I'm okay with leaving this for right now, it's, as long as they've got nothing on the books.
We still at two fifty right now, the two, the two fifty, that's fine.
You said they have fifteen left over from two.
Yeah, so the note, in the, in the document he handed us at the last meeting.
Yeah.
District-wide projects, repaving two fifty, priorities will be determined on a worst-first basis, future needs are expected to include CHS South parking lot, Do Little upper and lower playgrounds, so this doesn't seem.
That's the high school parking lot, right?
That doesn't.
That's the senior lot?
That doesn't seem to reference the main drive at CHS.
It does in the book, but that might, I guess, in their old submiddle, it seems to be the south parking lot, that'd be closest to, I don't know, senior lot there. Senior lot and.
I don't think it's that, maybe it might quickly push off another year, you're not doubling the project next year if you push it off. I mean, how much, how much degradation over the next year will happen, maybe my perspective is off, I'm certainly no engineer.
Alright, let's take it out.
You say out.
Out. Yeah.
Right, these out, zero, got it, next is the HVAC replacement RTUs Dodd, group top units of Dodd.
And that's Dodd HVAC, that's a prolonged spend, so, right, Jim, in reference to.
It's a prolonged spend.
Wait, 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 what if we do with the building in stage two HVAC is necessary regardless, right?
Yeah. Remain of town buildings.
Right, okay.
And even if we wanted to, even if we wanted to do something with Dodd, that's four, five, six years out at this point.
Yeah.
This one he wrote.
So, yeah, that one, I, I think he made a pretty good case for, for maintaining this in there currently and I was okay with that.
It is pretty brutal, man.
Alright.
Alright, next page, almost done.
Yep, coming down the home stretch.
Uh, sorry, HVAC improvements at CHS, he had.
They took out, yeah, the two orange ones, actually.
It's first two years and then it kind of moves it all into that third year.
Yep.
Uh, moving down, same with the pneumatic controls.
Yep.
TDC. Unit ventilator replacement, CHS Dodd and Do Little. So again, the way they list these, that tells me it's probably just Dodd, see, there's just two appropriations, one this year.
Yeah.
So that CHS may be a legacy from the title. I will just point out quickly, I know it's getting late, but that can end up mattering, it's always been very hard with our bond council. We've had priority of appropriation, right, we've worked together, they're over five hundred thousand, we sometimes have to make the case that these are individual school projects. Just note, you may not see some of these as referent items, even though in combination, they're over five hundred thousand.
Yeah.
It becomes a big nightmare headache for this guy next to him, but it's what they, it's the way they've always proposed these. But that one looks like it's Dodd unit ventilator for a hundred, is it a hundred twenty-five thousand?
Did you say what is unit ventilation, I have the same question.
I know, I know it's in there, we probably would talk about them.
Unit ventilator, what is that?
The camera board.
I just have my unit ventilator, do you ever get?
Oh, dude, is that something that we're hitting? Is that for air quality stuff?
It's a new. It's expensive, whatever.
It doesn't, it doesn't reference a grant, I don't know if he's.
I thought he had talked about that, that they were getting state grants for a lot of the, the air quality stuff that they were doing.
A lot of the stuff that we previously had approved, yeah, I mean, I'm certain, if it's eligible, it would certainly apply for it, I don't know if they all are, but I know that there are a lot of them.
I'd like to be curious to know if any of this stuff down here is possibly grant-funded.
I'm gonna have to fine tune that one for sure, because I.
Yeah, I'd like to know, because I mean, that could affect, I mean, if it's something that's grant-funded, we don't need to take it out that.
Unit ventilator versus fan coil. Oh, so they're like, they're like back pieces.
Oh, no, that's a split system.
Yeah.
Oh.
Unit ventilator looks like a split.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah? We, that's what, the interrupt said.
I don't know enough about it, am I right?
Yeah, but yeah, they're, they're designed to be an individual, individual per room as opposed to a, more of a big system.
So many square, okay.
Like that.
Okay.
They, like, what you would see like in a, like a lot of offices, have like a little.
They probably have them in some of the, the school offices.
And, are we done yet?
Close.
Yes.
Oh, we found out what a unit ventilator is.
It's a maze lift.
Are you guys still researching unit ventilators?
No, I'm just, it looks like the way it was presented on these documents, there's were two separate projects, there's one hundred and twenty-five thousand for Dodd Middle School unit ventilator replacements, and there's a hundred thousand for Do Little unit ventilator replacements.
And that's the two twenty-five.
And he's got, but they got Cheshire High School.
Yeah, that's out.
But that's the second, that's in second year.
Second year.
For three twenty-five.
That might, that might be.
Alright.
Yeah, so CHS comes in with the bigger number in year two.
Yep. Alright, we'll leave it, leave it alone.
Leaving two twenty-five then?
Yeah.
Yep, the fire alarm control, CHS and Do Little, we'll leave, or, well, there's something on the next page.
Interior, right, uh, fire alarm controls, leaving at a hundred thousand?
Yep.
And then.
Fifty for the auditorium.
High school?
RTU.
I think that's design.
Yeah.
Looks it with a big number following it.
Yeah. Stormwater management improvements?
We needed that this weekend. Which, by the way.
I think those were, if I remember the write-up, those were also the high school and Do Little.
You guys know that, right, books out, tough books out flooding really badly during a storm, since the, really badly.
Cafeteria HVAC, Highland, and electric upgrading emergency generator, additional funding Highland. That's, yeah, that's gonna, yeah, okay.
Staying, staying.
Alright, yep, staying, staying. And that is the last page, so.
How much did we take off?
Take a guess, because I know the number.
I'm hoping it's five million.
It's two million.
It's not that much.
I think we're, what do you think, we're down to eleven?
What, how much did we just take off? He's saying five, I have a two.
I have a four.
Well, we moved one point two right out of it, so yeah, I'm gonna go to three, I'm gonna switch to three.
I think it's three and a half.
The answer is four million ninety-nine thousand seven hundred and fifty.
But how much did we add, how much, that's.
We got eleven million there.
Is that our, we're done there, that's, we took off almost five?
That's when we took off to the bottom line, period.
Right now.
Ninety-nine.
I like it.
And how many represent them?
Eleven million.
Seven eleven million.
That I don't know. That's a Sean question, yeah, that's a Sean.
I'll tell you the easy one.
So you had, what's, what was the new sheet, what was the bottom line where it, it references out, what was the?
Forty-nine one nine minus five.
Jim, the one that he just printed.
Pass these out, but take one of the last. That's a new cover sheet that just includes where we started.
That's what Jim was just telling me, I don't know.
The average is eleven seven, right?
That was good work.
And where are we?
That you must.
I left it back into my.
No, we're less than that.
Nine.
Total reductions.
We're at fourteen nine.
We're at fifteen to minus four.
You're at ten.
Oh, fourteen, yeah, fourteen nine, and we took off four one, so we're at, yeah, we're at ten thousand eight hundred, or ten million eight hundred.
I wish you were at ten thousand, that'd be a boom.
That's good.
Whatever, really?
This productive, sorry.
So is it, huh?
Except, except the traffic.
I hate to, I hate to say it, but I, I think so.
So we're not lost.
Sensing, sensing that John is ready to jump on a hat, I gotta get up tomorrow for, I'll call for, call for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
And all in favor, we are adjourned, thank you, thank you.